Welcome, this is the November twenty first, twenty twenty three open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees. Being held via hybrid format, allowing the vote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. For the trustees, we've got Anna Geraldo Care.
Yeah.
Kay Kay Hill.
Here.
Karen Hart Gray.
Here.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Aiden Small.
Yeah.
Uh JP L. Pop is uh absent today and myself, Rob Pettit. And for library staff, we have Acting Director Dimitri Kiriakis.
Here.
Technology Specialist Danielle Tawa.
Actually, they're going to say upstairs. They won't text.
Um Administrative Specialist Jenna White.
Yeah.
Uh Program Specialist Gayle and Dennis.
No, same thing.
Oh, upstairs, got it. And Recording Secretary Faith Christ.
Yeah.
This meeting is being recorded. If there is a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at seven P M. on December twelfth, twenty twenty. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at seven oh two P M. For public comments, citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed the total of ten minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice would be called upon first. While the board will take public comments under advisement, there may be no opportunity for discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. So first of all, turn to minutes.
Of public comments?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Um, do we have any, any comments from, uh, all right, we'll, we'll get to that agenda item in a little bit. Um, so in that case, we'll turn to the minutes. Did anyone have any comments to be wrapped in?
I have two slides. Why don't you start? Go ahead. Well, okay, so um. Uh, on page five, I just too small edit, so page five, uh, line four. The trust, the line starts with the word trustees, but they cannot deliver a, and I believe the word until should be deleted. They cannot deliberate outside of the open meeting to approve.
Not seeing where you are.
Okay, so page five, um, the fourth line down.
Okay.
That kind of reverses the name.
And I also had a one on the previous page. Four. This is actually on the fifteenth line, uh, give everybody a chance to count down fifteen lines. And there's the line that begins with the word several trustees about halfway down the page. Um, and so the word bylaws, the words bylaws be replaced by policy. Um, because it's actually the policy that governs uh. That we pass to uh discuss what state aid should be used for, so it's not by law, but it's all.
Great, thank you, Kay. And Anna, did you have some?
Yes, uh, page five, um, the number, uh, I agree in inclusion update. The last sentence uh should read, uh, the Needham connects book club. Instead of the I connects.
Did we have any further comments to the minutes? In that case, could I get a motion to approve the minutes as modified?
Motion, please.
Second. All right. And uh, since all of the present trustees are actually here, uh, we can just vote by yay or nay, so all in favor?
I don't know.
All right. Any votes? All right. So we are all set on the minutes. Um, from there, we're going to do things slightly out of order since we have our trustee emeritus or our, our former trustee, Tom Harkins here. Um, so we're just going to move that item of new business up if everybody's okay with that, um, to prior to the um director's report. And I can just very quickly run through that item. Um, so Tom has offered very, very generously to donate the sum of seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents, which is the dummy decimal system number for baseball, um, to establish a new trust fund. Um, so the specifics for the fund are it will be um open to anyone who wishes to donate in the future. It will be called the Thomas Harkins Fund. It will be used for baseball-related items or activities. Um, funds can be spent at any time during the year. The library can spend all of the interest and up to four percent of the principal annually, and any other donations go to principal. Um, Tom has presented a check for that amount um here. So this is something that we.
Yeah.
So this is something that we will need to uh discuss and approve. So first of all, we opened up for any discussion.
Well, my only discussion is just to thank Tom, very generous for, uh, and I can think of lots of fun ideas to beyond, in, in addition to books and movies about baseball. There could be a lot of fun ideas regarding that activities that kids and adults could, could do to uh perpetuate the love of baseball, right?
Great. I'll just chip in, chime in. Thank you, Tom. I'm looking forward to uh going to some of these, some of these activities and reading some of these books. This would be a great addition to the library, uh, library selections. Um, so with that, we have a motion to approve the creation of, of this fund. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Right, we'll be unanimous to approve it. Thank you very much, Tom.
You're welcome.
Thank you. See you later.
Stay for the fascinating rest of the meeting.
Great, so I will turn it over to Dimitri for the director's report.
Okay. Uh, welcome everything. I'll run through some of the highlights. Uh, now, new part-time circulation staff members recently started Suzanne Head and Kelsey. I hope I'm not forgetting her name here, she's going to be ready. If I'm not sure if I'm saying it correctly, so I apologize next time. We're happy to have them. Stop by and say hi to see them. They've started over the last few days and they're been a welcome addition of circulation staff. Let's see a picture of a car there. There was a ghost project inside of it on October twenty first. They enjoyed seeing the ECO car, even if they hadn't signed up for the slide making, which looked like a lot of fun too. The town's annual spooky walk in Greensfield on October 30th was really popular. People have to see the library there. And we see how one of our children's librarians said they had three hundred children visit the library here.
Wow. Wow.
And you can see the other picture there. The children's room was flash bombed by several cops and spider and people, I'm not sure. Uh, the room was busy with children who were very excited by the appearance of the spider.
So where do those spider people come from?
You know, I don't know.
Lots of different multiverses.
Yeah.
Erin Bassett has been running a student-run Dungeons and Dragons club, which is doing really well, looking to expand to additional group for additional agents in November. Many of our departments work for the Indian community Needham. I find the plan November displays featuring uh characters, topics, and authors with connections to India and Indian Americans. I kind of also making a donation to the library for the purchase of more books in India to add to our collection of the children's YA and adult collection. Also Allison Smith, our head of reference, Deborah Levitt, our circulation supervisor, and Erin, our YA librarian collaborator, and you plan for streamlining the library's internal display planning process. Uh, more library staff will get to contribute to play ideas, but a timeliness and responsibility is to be clear. So before it was a little bit of like, people come up ninety and do it, and then other department had the same idea, so we're just trying to get it a little more forward. Erin, you may know, is um certified by the town's family president for mental health birthday, and she re-upped that and certified for another three years. And good luck with that by then. Kay has conducted the retraining sessions for staff on the community room technology, so that uh no matter what's going on, whereas on staff, we've been done lending hands when it's necessary. And they've got a few things with Danielle, she worked on librarian, uh, finally called and fixed, he fixed the problem and uh printing error on our public computers. She set up emergency computers for our older uh CPUs, which we temporarily swapped out. An event merging, an event emergency is when a computer dies, and we need a spare one. Whether, you know, you keep the public going and their staff going. We now have an extra wireless access point, a switch for our wireless event, event emergency, like planned for those.
Yeah.
Um, and Danielle Gunn, who she had a large archival backlog, which is, which are material with people and organizations connecting, meaning donated to us, and it's just current, you go for our IT, so you've been able to catch up on that. And then maybe where that our automated resource network, Minuteman Library Networks, is switching to a new vendor called Aspen. We have to next summer when they sunset the burn system, so we've been working on that transition as well. We have, we have plenty of time. You really won't notice, it'll look a little different, but that's about it, but there's some backend work, backup work that we have to do.
So this is the computer catapulting system?
Yeah, yeah, so it's all passive, but in terms of like the public just seeing the catalog, it'll look a little different. Nobody really has to worry about it. You still search for things. We just have to do some things in the backend, make sure. You may have noticed, so if you've ever looked at the catalog and put in a book and you saw, you know, Wellsy has it on order, Walker has it on order, you think, why don't we have that? Now we do, because we've added the acquisitions project from Baker and Taylor. And uh, all credit to that goes to Tamara Dolphin, who's our new tech service, new, so we know, been here a few weeks. A tech services supervisor, and she did a lot of work with her staff to get that implemented, so you should start to see that if you haven't already, it's already in place, but. So um, and that really does help when the public will ask us to buy something in the past, they say, can you buy this for us? Like, we actually already have it on order, and we've looked it up. Like, well, why can't I see it in catalog? So, so this is great now. As soon as we order something, because our order system, you'll see it, so the public will say, oh, yeah, it's on order, it's coming. Um, okay. Tech Services is almost back to nearly fully staff. Um, for a while, we were just down to one person, Manny, who did a. A rope job, trying to keep up, but as Jay's pointed out in past meetings, materials won't getting out there as quickly as possible. Uh, one specifically reported in October, we have five hundred eighteen items compared to three hundred forty-one September, so we're catching up. A lot more new things are getting out there.
Does that have anything to do?
I'm sorry. No, that's all right.
And with the, there's some empty stacks back there?
That is not entirely, that is, no, that is when we did uh remove a lot of things that were there, we kept weeding, been there for decades and had not, had not moved. So what we're making, we're gonna do some repositioning. We want to give some more space to the young adult collection, want to bring by orders in more um visible spot, so we just threw some reorganizing. Randy's involved with that quite a bit, and then once Randy left and we're just down to Manny, that's kind of been put on hold. So we're, we're gonna get back on track with that, but we are saving, we're not, we're not gonna keep it empty for just a little while. And Nick Carter, I think, I think he's from Ole College, he put up the original Lego display for childrens. So he's been back working on updating the Lego display, because of common change, so he's making some changes. And those changes will be reflected soon, if he hasn't finished already.
I think I saw the, the swings are there, turning, um, and the new pathways.
Red chair.
And yeah, the red chair is the accessible red.
Yeah.
And, and we're grateful to come back to these little members to do that.
That's beautiful, yeah.
Uh, so under personnel, we, so um, you, you may recall that Robin Pliner, Digital Media Services Librarian, has left. Uh, one of our, we've been able to promote from our part-time reference librarian, Jackie Bateman. She just took off her early pair for the last day in Brooklyn, she also worked in Brooklyn yesterday. Uh, this Monday, she will be on full time.
Oh, excellent.
And taking over all those duties uh that Robin had been doing. So that, we're very excited about that. Also, um, so we, HR has posted three positions for us, two part-time, but we have open. Uh, one is Jackie's, she's vacating to take the full-time position. The other one is for tech services, that's the fourth position that, that, that'll have them almost fully uh staffed, tech services. And the other one is in children's, and then that's going to be that one. So we've been getting applicants, we've been getting applicants and then materials, and as soon as I get a chance, after today, I will be going to all of that. And on Friday morning, and hopefully we'll get uh close to fully staffed. I never want to say. Fully staffed, because minute I say it's not, so, so that's where we're staffing. And I think. Buildings and grounds, um, and we'll come back to the gifts.
Sounds good.
Um, the public elevator has been repaired.
Yay.
It's been working really well. We'll make sure to carry a cell phone whenever you go. But nobody's happy, so it's been, been good. Uh, Angel's team worked hard, they replaced a lot of ceiling tiles, um, ACO, which one of our renders, replaced the filters in the rooftop units. And Angel's team will be replacing the building covers as well. You see the pending items, um. Maintenance still waiting for some masonry work around sidewalk and staff entrance. There is a work order for the alarms on the first floor and, and third floor, so we're, that's, I, I think that's progressing quite a bit, but Angel told me to hold off, so he's gonna confirm things for me on Monday. So, and we have another meeting in three weeks, so by then I'll be able to mention on that. Angel's also waiting for approval for Leona Plumbing to replace the waterless terminals and the management. And uh, that's coming due, and uh, we are getting the carpet replacement in this room, uh, and that's happening, I think, July, December first, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Good question on the carpets.
Sure.
So wonderful, they're getting replaced, and it was pretty unusual flooding in the summer. Did we figure out where that water was coming in, is it like the old foundation or?
I can speak to it. Um, it was coming down the hill, and it came all the way down, and then it collected in the hallway there, and the drains just couldn't keep up with the river coming down the hill.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so fortunately, like, we were here in the building, um, and then the, our building maintenance staff ran outside and just kind of swept it away towards the parking lot. But it needed like actively to be moved.
So it was coming in under the doors?
These two doors.
Yeah.
So, but it was really, I mean, all things considered, really minimal. If we're really lucky, it would be great that we were open here at a time. Yeah, it's just if it had been overnight.
Right, that would.
Wouldn't have known.
Yeah.
Angel was.
Major thanks to that. I would think if there's any easy fixes for, for the new carpet, but it sounded like it's more the grading issue.
Yeah. Okay.
We could have some bailers handing down here.
Does anyone have any question on financial? If not, um, I just want to point out, the statistics are a little wonky this month. Part of that is because the downloadable statistic that we normally, Robin would always pull up for us, and while still have detailed instructions. Between our staffing and people being on sick and a variety of, like last week, I had three people out, Danielle, Allison, and Kay. Um, I've not been able to collect all that, and we haven't been able to go through all the, the uh documentation Robin left us to get that going, so.
Are you talking about the holding staff?
I am talking about certain.
Circulation staff.
Just the downloadable.
Is this the downloadable, but that's.
That's not.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, it's definitely.
But that's because of the new system?
No.
Or just?
No, 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 it's, it's because normally Robin would pull that for us, and she contributed is to put all this together.
Right.
He has not, he's had people in and out, um, then Allison is trying to figure, and then she was out last week. And I'm, so we haven't been able to move them, so that's why the stats go a little off. But in general, you know, I can see last year, we have a lot more than. But again, I don't say, I, I think the month isn't, I would, next, by next meeting, I should have more access. Okay. And uh.
Are you gonna read this quick?
Do, do I do it? Are we begin? Uh, yeah, if you're, if you're better, I can, uh, one of us. I can do that. The gifts are from Maxine Dilligan, Needham Public Library Acrylic on Hammers donated by the artist. Um, then Astonish Children Handbook for Children's and Children's by Sam Bolstein and Robin Brooks, Keller, estimated value about one seventy-five, donated by one of the authors, Sam Bolstein. A line at the bottom by Lou Franklin, estimated value twenty-nine but, donated by the author. A history box by Dean Bane, estimated value five dollars, also donated by the author. A thousand dollars to the family foundation for donation fund, and five thousand money saved to the impaired fund for vision repair.
Oh, substantial gifts this, this month, and um, thanks. No, thanks, thank Tom, but we should give a big shout out to Ann too, for her support of her visually impaired fund.
Yeah. It's a very, very generous gift, certainly very important one.
And let the, the public know that, um, you know, everyone is welcome if that's a, like, cause a, um, you know, type of resource that they want to, um, contribute to that these funds are open.
Do we have any discussion or a motion to approve gift list?
Moves to accept the list?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Great, and thank you to everyone who has donated. Back to the agenda here, um, so we will turn to new business. We've already had a trust fund vote, um, so we can put that behind us. Um, I'll turn to Katie for an update on the director.
Great, thank you. Um, good to see you all. And so. The update is that uh we have a recruiter, and that procurement takes longer than any of us want. So we went through over the last four weeks of procurement process to hire recruiter to help us. Um, go back out, um, so we are executing the contract um this week with um Community Paradigm Associates. They're based out of Plymouth. Um, and they are a consulting firm that do recruitments for municipal um positions, particularly a lot of executive searches um for department manager level roles. Town manager, town administrator type roles. Um, they also do um strategic planning and training and management support, um, again, really focused on municipalities. Um, the founder of it is Bernie Lynch. He is the one um that will be working primarily with us on this. Um, and Bernie's history, just background, um, he was the city manager in Lowell, he was also the town manager in Chelmsford um for twenty years. Um, and his team is um a lot of former um municipal uh managers from Massachusetts. So. We did reach out to two other firms that were, I'd say, much more library-specific. Um, the two downsides and why I ended up going with Community Paradigm. Um, they both are out of state and um came in at a higher price point. Um, so we have worked with Bernie and Community Paradigm before, and he really knows Needham. Um, which I think is of value. Um. Community Paradigm recently did the Watertown search, just for context, in terms of, so they've done other library searches as well, and we have used them before for other positions. Um, so in terms of scope of services, um, we. Asked that Bernie take a look at everything we had already put together, the job description, the job posting, the materials that we used all throughout the process, and give us feedback about. Um, ways that we could change them, improve them um from an outsider perspective. So that kind of initial um review of what we've done and suggestions is the first part of the scope. Um, and interfacing with us on um. How he, he would recommend that we change that for our next round, um, and then ultimately Community Paradigm will be, um, once there's consensus on kind of an updated process and some of those updated documents based on those discussions. Um, they really will run the process for us in terms of they accept the applications, um, and they really, uh, I'd say like shepherd the process moving forward. So. I've had an initial discussion with him about. How our process just ran, um, and um. Next steps for me is to sit with Bernie and just really map out a timeline for these next steps, uh, so. That's the update for now, um, and I will, um, I have a timeline attached to the scope of services. I'll get that out to everyone by email.
And okay.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask really quickly, you know, I understand that um, that the headhunter will be uh to some degree looking into the process, but as a starting point, are we thinking of running a similar process to the last round?
So from my initial discussion with Bernie, he asked me if, how I thought the process went and the pros and cons, and so I shared that I, I thought there was a lot of value in how we did it, um, but um, that is up for discussion and input from all of you if there's um. But um. Feedback that you want to add into the mix. Um, but I think the starting point is that we felt like um structurally it was good in terms of making sure that between um. Myself and the town manager, the HR department, you as trustees and staff, that we did get everyone involved. Um, and so I, for me personally, I don't want to lose that, um, but um. You know, we'll see what feedback. We get from him.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I agree with asking, I was gonna ask the same question, which, which is, you know, an important one, and um, yeah, I, you know, also think that the, the process was good and really inclusive and really positive, and uh, you know, it seemed like maybe getting uh. The problem was probably not getting quite enough applicants um of the, of the uh level that we were looking for, so um, um, it sounds like the recruiter. And I've met um, Bernie Lynch, uh, he ran a session here at the library a few months ago, right?
Yeah, staff, one of the staff trainings.
So I sat with him for lunch.
Yeah, perfect.
Anna.
One other, um. I'm glad that the recruiter or the firm is going to be looking at the process and giving feedback. I think the other piece of it is. What elements of, about the position and what are the benefits that we need to highlight a little bit differently, more positioning or, or, or under, underscoring certain. Uh, facets of the job or wording, I don't know, something uh kind of presenting the opportunity from a different angle. So that folks, you know, so we can address from folks, because I think we, there were many candidates, but I'm wondering if we move things around, or we uh presented in a different light. That made a trap the difference of candidates, you know? So I'm just wondering what other airways we can, because. We had enough candidates, we had a good process, and we said, what else can we? Change within that, within the parameters that we are.
Will they be, will Bernie and his team be setting those parameters just to um, kind of piggyback on what you were just saying? Is there some kind of? More specific kind of uh avenues that they want to take, because we did have candidates, but. Just trying to figure out. Like, I was just trying to, for myself personally, I was trying to figure out what we could do better, because I wasn't really sure, and making sure we know what we're looking for. Um, just to be assisted in, if there's something we're not, may not be privy to or paying attention to, it'd be a good idea just to get an idea of. Uh, a focal point, um. Um, you know, because people had. Certain library-type credentials, so it's a little confusing on that point.
Yeah, Bernie could put together a sheet of um sort of. Qual, like characteristics or qualities, like a summary that have been taken from everybody, including staff. And the trustees that everybody could kind of refer to, so we could all sort of measure against one. Set of criteria, and then we could know what the town is looking for on there as well, and then we can try to judge in our interviews against those qualities, so we could see how they. Fit in it. I think that's sort of what you were getting.
Yeah.
And then my other question would just be, uh, since we have more time. Uh, a little more set schedule that hopefully doesn't have to move too much since everybody had a hard time with, not everybody, but me personally had a hard time with scheduling. And would love to be able to make the interview.
Yeah.
Oh. Yep, um, since we have a little, the luxury of a little more time and we're not as rushed, uh, hopefully we can. That, yeah, but if we had sort of something to refer to, say, okay, we're looking for X, Y, Z. And concerned about A or like this, what we want to focus on, then, um, then we can each take our impressions of the candidates against, against that metric.
Here. I'm sure you're already doing this, um, but. Uh, you were in all the sessions. Right? Um, and so you're in a lot of ways the best position to kind of. Almost be the postmortem on that process and, and feed that back to the materials itself and be like. When we finally got through all the interviews, were we asking about the same things that we said we wanted at the beginning? And we want to probably make sure that those line up. Um, as we do the next draft of those things.
Yes, and, and that's a great, yes, flag, and I think the one, um. Reflection I'm thinking of now is. If there's a one set rubric. If you're in round one, there might be five questions that only get to some of the rubric, and so what I saw happening is that, you know, participants in panel one. Will have opinions, but just about the questions. That were asked in that round, and then the other questions are like, well, I don't really know the answers to those questions, and I'm like, well, round two does.
Yeah.
And so, y- you know, it's true and, um, the through line in the interviews really is made up is by design, um, but I can appreciate that. For everyone else who aren't in all three, that you only really do have a piece of it.
Yeah.
Sure, and I think I was thinking more just everything collected to see the different areas. The town is looking for a different person. Or a different qualities, and we are looking for them, staff is looking for, and not necessarily list, like, I'm not expecting us to go through the grade of everything, but just to have like a. A kit or some kind of thing to refer to, and even if you only get to talk about one. Part, then maybe you can talk to a person in the later, one-on-one, only, um, a- and sort of hear their impression on the other part. Understanding that it's, that we'll have different questions and different focuses for different. Um. Sessions, but I want to just make sure that. It's not just our thoughts on the person because it's encompassing all the good work done to survey the staff and to know what the town's looking for, so we can get in line with those and then tailor our questions to it, so. Thinking that.
All right, any, uh, any further discussion?
Just one, do we, do we know roughly when we're gonna be probably posting again?
I don't know that yet. Yeah, I just have to. Get a time with Bernie, yeah.
All right, so we can move on. Um, next item on the agenda is an update on fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. And I'll go back to Katie for that.
Great, thanks. Um, so in your packets, there was a copy of the operating budget submission and the capital budget submission, um. I think just by way of context, so, um, the big asks really are exactly what we had discussed, um, at your meeting you had voted on in terms of. For the operating, um, budget requesting the, um, part-time young adult reference librarian, um. And then for the capital project phasing the, um. Projects that came out of the space study, um, and then for capital, we also have library technology, um, submissions kind of each year to make sure we're replacing. Equipment as they come due. Um, so I wasn't going to go through line by line, but I thought maybe I'd just give context for where we are in the process and what comes next, and then, um, if there's any questions. Um, so. In terms of where we are in the calendar, so at this point, all of the departments have submitted their budget requests, um, into the town manager. Um, they are largely like unchangeable at this point, and that was a little asterisk because like, you know, maybe something can happen, but at this point. Um, the submissions are in and fine now, the, um, town manager has been meeting with each department manager to review their submissions, make sure that we understand what folks are asking for and why. Um, and for the. Let me take it in two parts. For the capital budget, uh, the town manager, um, meets with the select board, so at each of the, the next probably three or four select board meetings, this will be an agenda item where. The town manager will review with the select board here the capital requests that have been submitted, um. And the select board will have kind of their initial feedback, and then they'll start to prioritize, um. Based on, uh, the town manager's, um, guidance in terms of how much money overall do we think that we have for. Um, that capital budget, particularly for fiscal year twenty-five, that's real money, you know, the out years. We don't know what we'll have until we get to those years, um. So the select board will vote to finalize the, the capital plan, um, by mid-December. This is actually quite quick. Um. And, um, so that's one path. Um, and then the, um, operating budget, the town manager. Under the charter is required to, um. Have a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-five presented by the end of January. Um, the budget that actually goes on the warrant in May is the finance committee's budget. So the town manager produces a balanced budget with her recommendations. Um, uh, on a parallel track, the finance committee is starting their budget hearings and deliberations, um. Basically, like now into, starting like mid-December, they'll meet, um, December, January, February, um. Every week to review departmental submissions, um. The finance committee has to produce a draft budget by February twenty-second and then a final budget, which is what actually goes on the town meeting by March fifteenth. Um, so for the library, um, the finance committee assigns liaisons to each budget, um, Josh Levy and Karen Carlton. Are the finance committee liaisons to the library, um, and so, um, they'll be meeting, um, with. Um, staff and Jay and I, um, just those liaisons to just work through their questions on these submissions, and then there'll be a full, um. Finance committee meeting at some point where a library will be an agenda item and will present to the full committee, um.
Do we have the time yet for that or?
For the full committee, I think the tentative date they were looking at was December thirteenth, but I'd say it's quite tentative.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can confirm that when it's finalized. So I think that's process-wise. Where we're at, I mean. Questions?
I have one question, it's probably just my. Ignorance on my new show, spending requests, um, but I noticed that the. The part-time reference librarian had two different forms, different by, uh, a trailing S. Um, are, is it this, it's the same position?
It is.
And it has like the exact same description. But we just cut the numbers differently or something.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Um, it's just how, um. We differentiate requests internally, um, because, huh, this is really walking lingo, but. A DSR four is a detailed spending request, and the four is for something that is new or different or additive that you're asking for money for. So the DSRs one through three are your maintenance budget. What's the cost next year of doing what you're doing this?
Yeah.
Um, so the DSR four is the new request, um, when that happens to be, uh, natively. You get, you also have to fill out an S form.
Got it.
So. It is so that our finance director can keep it all straight, uh, but we question.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so, um. Just looking, I, you know, I will admit to not being a budget, uh. So our capital budget. I guess what I'm trying to. Um, get it, it is the one that includes basically the computer equipment and, um. Uh, table replacement and that sort of thing, um, what, so where are we, or, or have you not talked about it yet? The, the whole. Big, you know, the renovation of the team room space. Now where does that fall into this scenario?
Yep. So each of the four projects coming of space study are their own capital. Projects, and, um, so if we just chunk out the young adult room as your first priority, um, capital projects, uh. Traditionally. Get, um, funded in two cycles, you fund design, and then the following year you fund, uh, construction. Um, and usually all this starts with feasibility, which you guys have already done, so it's feasibility, design, construction. Um, so I just realized before this meeting that the packet, um, is ordered alphabetically and not by fiscal year, but. If you go to, yeah, if you go to page seven through nine, um, that's the young adult project, and. So we've requested. Design funds for that project in fiscal year twenty-five and then construction funds in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, on page eight. Design in F point twenty-five. And so in terms of. You know, how this goes into the larger. Budget process, um, all of the capital requests get collated, and that's the discussion between the town manager and the select board that will start, um, at their next meeting. Basically to preview for them. All the submissions townwide. And then at town meeting, the only items that are actually voted on are fiscal year twenty-five items, um, because you're only voting to fund. For, for the fiscal year that. Is coming up.
Okay, so for this year, just so I understand, um. For this year, we're asking for. The four fifty-four?
Yep.
And not the. Two point two, no.
Oh, that's what, that's, that's correct, yeah, okay.
And Katie, would that four fifty-four be a separate warrant article?
Yes. It would.
Oh, I'm just thinking ahead for advocacy.
Yep.
Get to that.
Yep.
We'll need to.
Yes, are there, are, uh, are there ways that this gets derailed before we get to the warrant though, and what are those?
Um, the select board has the authority to decide what goes on the warrant and what, um, is funded in the capital plan. So the capital year is playing as five years. And FY twenty-one is year one, and that's the funding items for town meeting, um, so if the select board, when they're reviewing all of the competing requests. Um, they will decide long before town meeting, they'll decide by mid-December, um, which items. That they want both in that five-year plan and to be funded in year one, um, so if they. Don't. Advance a project for FY twenty-five, it won't ever even be on the warrant for Tappy to vote on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So going back to advocacy, it starts with a select board. Right?
Yeah, it's like. That's why, that's why I.
Think the one other thing, um, that I wanted to just make sure, um, to call out in case people really start digging into the numbers, the numbers in the space study and the numbers in this are going to be off a little bit. That's because, um. UTL guessed when we would fund these projects, and so Hank took those estimates and updated them based on the years we submitted.
Right.
Uh, so if you see a discrepancy, that's, that's fine.
I could just see advocacy being an important item for these, especially when, you know, we're looking at just the design phase. Being half a million and it's good for us to know. Why does it cost half a million to design a space reallocation of a library? And why is that important? So. Just something for all of us to think about.
How would we find that out?
Um, Katie, should we, we is with. Somebody at the town to ask those questions or?
Ask, ask it one more time.
So just kind of, eh, for us, you know, to advocate for these projects, which I, I don't speak for everybody personally, I think they're extremely important. One of the questions that might come up is, you know, why does it cost half a million dollars to do design work? Where we're not even knocking down walls, um. If we're armed with some answers for that, I know not right now, I'm sure there's a lot that goes into that, but it might help us as we advocate for these projects. Um, to help answer that question.
Yeah, who would, who would know the answer to that, that's.
Yeah.
Who could we ask?
I could follow up on that.
Or maybe Earhart knows since you sat in on that whole process.
Well. I think it's, it's in other hands, um. Obviously, the folks at the P V B C, um. Are the ones that are kind of the experts in this. Um. And talking to Hank about how that process unfolds, it's a good starting point as well. It might be a good start. Eh, as we individually advocate.
I can chat with Hank.
Um, any further discussion on that agenda item? All right, then we can move on to whole business business, and thank you, Katie, for both those updates. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, and the whole business, the only item we have today is the equity improvement update. Um.
Interview given. I don't have, that's what I have. Here, um. Which is probably my in circulation, celebrating Hispanic heritage month. We added a few items, uh, forty-two young adults, thirty-nine adults. And fifty-one you added in silver, and, and those are still in. Mostly sixty-six or sixty-eight. Um. And then tech services with the help of selectors, continue to have DEI information on the entire items as they're. Cataloging, adding to the collection, they'll tag them. Uh, for the product, we need to make retail. Um, and only as being followed, and just. I'm telling you, now station, I heard that. Reacting, still going to the festival in Frampton State University in a second. With most of the speakers in DEI. And that's all I got.
Great, thank you for that update, and does anybody else have any DEI updates to share? Well, in that case, we can move on to the next item, which is the art and exhibits committee report. And all terms.
Actually, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, it says Anna on the.
Yes, I noticed that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so we don't actually have a lot to report because, um. We met before our last meeting, and at our last meeting, we voted on the, uh, upcoming artists for the first six months of twenty twenty-four. Um, currently, we do have the, um, EMR Association exhibit up for the next two months. And we are planning to have our next committee meeting, um, December sixth, I believe, and Dimitri is going to join us, right?
I might be, I am, I'm gonna be a little late.
Okay.
Um. I'm going to, um. Go ahead, I think. It's. It's a meeting with the, uh, the bin company is.
Oh, oh.
So.
That's important.
So it is, it finishes, but I find it coming, so I might be a little late by end time.
So at that point, we're each of us, uh, on the committee are, are doing some outreach, um, to, uh, various, uh, other organizations and other, uh, regional libraries to. Build a little bit more of a, um, a diverse, uh, uh, group of artists than to, um, so that's what we're working on, we'll be all reporting back in.
Great. Thank you, Ken, um. Next on the agenda is the diver series, which I'll provide a very brief update on. Um, so I've been in some discussions with one of the Earhart's colleagues. Over at Owen, who recently wrote a, well, fairly recently wrote a book about asteroid hunting. Um, and actually has done a TED Talk on the subject. Um, we are working on nailing down a date originally, we're looking at early December, we're now looking at possibly mid-December, and she's off next, next year on a Fulbright scholarship. But, um, we will host it, it's really a question of when at this point, but it should be a very exciting program. For the second half of the year, I do think it will be a limited MacGyver series this year. Um, still accepting any suggestions, if you know of any interesting authors or topics, please feel free to, uh, send them over. Um, but that's all that I have on MacGyver.
I love the idea of asteroid hunting.
It affects us all.
Are we gonna learn, learn some ways to find, go hunting ourselves?
Be a good name for Ben. That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
I think it could draw interest from a lot of different groups, I mean, it might be interested in that too. Um, so the next agenda item is the friends normally, uh, Jay provides an update. Does anyone else have any? Friends related updates to share?
Oh, I did, oh, yeah, because I went last night to Janet, and they are pro, uh, out of the wish list, we, uh. Yeah, so what was most critical, so they improved their programming, programming part of the. Of that, I think it was like. Seven, three hundred or something like that. And the, the rest of it, they'll, it, a lot of people were not able to make it last time, so. I always want to say that, I have enough. I was there, um, so they approved the programming and the rest of it was devoted on, you get. When more of that. And that's, and then I didn't stay for the rest. And that's, and then I didn't stay for the rest.
Thanks to the friends for the uh the excellent program, many thanks to the friends.
Very grateful.
Um, from Library Foundation Needham, I believe we have Monica Brucchi.
Hey, team. Hey, uh, thanks, sorry about the background noise, um. No, uh, long-form updates, just wanted to let you know that we're focusing on uh publicity this year. Um, there's apparently a lot of confusion between uh the Friends of Needham Library and Library Foundation of Needham, which is understandable. Uh, we share sort of very close niches in the community, uh, so we're working this year on. Uh, expanding our presence in the community and expanding our name recognition basis. Um, that includes uh getting social media accounts. No, sorry, sweetheart, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to uh the library. My four-year-old is uh is here with me, um. Uh, that includes getting uh social media accounts established, so that's uh, that's what we're focusing on as a board, as the overall uh push. But then, of course, uh, we are a fundraising group, so that's uh wrapped up in our social media uh push as well, so. Um, no specific updates for the end of the year, um. We're uh, so far, we've engaged a local high school student who is going to be our media coordinator, which is very exciting.
Very cool, well, thanks, Monica, for that uh, that update. And that brings us much quicker than I expected to the crusty comment section.
Do you, do you beat Jay's record?
It's funny, earlier today, we're talking about that, I didn't think that I would be the record, but uh, I don't know, I don't know if I want to.
About an hour.
Yeah, like, wow, like seven minutes.
Fifty-three.
Got a little extra time, one thing I will throw away, since it's crusty comment. Um, time right now, and this isn't an agenda item for this meeting, but we will need to think about um measuring progress on the strategic plan. We do have a new strategic plan, you know, approved it a few months ago, obviously, there's been a lot of change in the few months following that. Um, that is something where I'm continuing to work on a document to kind of lay that out, but we should probably think about um starting to assign. And maybe to be something for the December meeting, assigning different sections of the strategic plan to review. And focus on that the first half of twenty twenty four, so we can have that review concluded by, you know, late spring or early summer. I think it's kind of a similar cadence to what we've done in the past.
I am um curious about the process you're proposing because um. The way it was done in the past was by topic, by area, right, by facilities or collections and so on, I T. This, this strategic plan seems to be the goals, so, but it was kind of like a menu of goals depending on what was going to go. And it was not a, it was not a goal-by-goal thing, it was more like. Year by year, but you would pick from different goals, so I'm, I I just would like to learn more about what, what do you think?
Well, I can only speak for myself, um, what I was thinking was probably easy is to separate it by goals. Uh, that's just kind of a, a simple way to split it apart, there's roughly about as many goals as we have trustees, if I recall. Um, and that way we would avoid kind of fragmenting it and having different sub-items under different roles being evaluated by, by different trustees. Um, that's just the first thing that comes to my mind, but.
So, uh, yes, and my recollection is that, um. There were specific goals that were picked. Uh, because they were easier to accomplish, they were short-term or some, there was some kind of a criteria that, that uh, the the director at the time had picked. And so I'm wondering if that's being followed now or are we on pause until we would be hired and. So I'm kind of, that, that would be my, my first question before we start analyzing anything.
Can I do that? I think a lot of the goal for things the staff's already working for, who've made progress for it. Some things that were specifically, will we need to be directed to drive that on?
So maybe that's the first thing for us to know, what is, what is?
But there's stuff that's being done, have, we have been working on and are continuing to progress on, so I think. Those might be the board, I, I think first, you know?
And I think we approved, we actually voted to approve a list of of sort of priority items for this fiscal year, so that might be. And, you know, to the extent that some of those are are paused, then so be it, we can reflect that in in our, you know, our update, our evaluation. But, but yeah, I mean, we can think about more granularity and how this process would work, but it's definitely something that we should probably take off soon, even while. The director search process is coming on, I think originally the thought was wait until we have a director on and then kind of coordinate it with, with her, but, you know.
But I think there was a lot that that we're still, we're working, continuing progress on it, so regardless of whether. What, you know, whenever we can get, we'd like.
Exactly, yeah. Plus, it's still our responsibility.
Yeah.
Long time, I mean, our last strategic plan ended at, what, the end of twenty twenty-one? Um, and so it's been quite a long time since we've done an evaluation, so I think it's a good idea. How do we want to um come, come to the next meeting, uh? Rob, are you thinking of coming with some kind of plan that we would each take a part of? Or how should we, or for me, you know, how do, how do we want to organize ourselves around that uh for the next meeting?
I think that would be a good idea for the next meeting to go through goal by goal and figure it out, I mean. Sometimes people might be particularly interested in one goal, which in which case maybe it makes sense just to kind of. Not do a draft style, but you know, if if anybody feels strongly about a particular goal, have them, have them work on that. Um, and then the other thing is the format of it, you know, in in past evaluations, we kind of did a very detailed like action item by action item. Update, which sometimes could, again, just my opinion, could get a little bit boxed down. And some of the action items, I think one of the things we discussed, we came up with the most recent strategic plan and the current one. Was having enough flexibility in the action items that we're evaluating kind of the goals and the objectives. Holistically, and then whatever the priority items are underneath them, but we're not going through, you know, there are sort of. There's an illustrative list of action items for the goals, like one of them was consider getting a book appeal. We wouldn't be evaluating that necessarily, plus that was actually a priority item for that to get. Um, so there might be ways of thinking about, you know, how granular do we want to get as we're evaluating these goals and objectives.
So I, I propose to have a list, an update, an update for us to see the list of the items that are being already done by the, the staff. You know, so that we know focus on those and then the priorities for the coming year. So that, that would, that should be our focus and then that, then we can decide, uh.
Go look through plan and and uh see what.
No, I just, I just for clarity, say the, the FY twenty-four action items that the, that you all voted on, those go through the end of June. So I just want to be clear that we don't go on the calendar year, so the, the twenty-four goals are set and then leading up to the end of this. You know, spring, summer, you, you all would be voting on twenty-five goals to, you know, to direct it, so, um, but yes, I mean, we.
Um, but we're, this is a review, right, so we're trying to review.
Reviewing those goals for FY.
Yes, yes, over, yeah.
Twenty twenty, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three?
Before, it's from July until now.
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah.
So is that half-year review almost?
Yeah, it really happened at points.
Although by the time we vote on the final, I mean, how we did it in past years, as a call, I only did it for one of those cycles, I think, or two. But we, individual trustees would get one area and then we would present that at a meeting. And people might have comments on it, and then at the end of it, we would pull away all of those into one big document and then approve that.
I, I, I hope that we, there this, this board is mostly new people, there's a new plan. I think there is an opportunity for us to improve on the process. Um, I think that process was, it was a little cumbersome and I don't know how much we accomplished with that. And it was, it was a little bit of a, I kind of went into it, it was already happening for years, so. But now this is a new, I mean, this is a new opportunity to to see how we can make it more our own. And and also the, the structure of the goals is different, it's not, but it's not by topic, it's by, you know.
I can just, I think this was more looking towards the community than the post before, the other ones are more operation oriented. So I think it was hard for all the folks with previous folks to, you know, I T, how does I T work, I just, you know? I think this is easier in a lot of ways, because you are all the community, you kind of share the same ethos, which you're looking to do. So they follow the lines of what you wanna, which you're looking for, I think, I think it's easier than the last one.
And and it would probably require a different way of reporting or or knowledge, that's what I'm saying, I don't think the topic approach is going to work. That's what I'm.
But Rob was talking about doing a goal like us, so each of us would take a goal, right, and look, and um. You know, maybe between now and the next meeting, we can review the goals and see, you know, have one or two in mind, not just one. We could, because, you know, somebody else might want the same one, but, um, not.
That, that is all, that will only work if that goal has anything in the priority for this year.
I think, so I think there are only five or six goals overall. I can check, I think in the priority list, there's at least one of those for each of the.
Okay, that will.
If not, all, yeah.
We'll figure it out once we have information in front of us.
And why are we doing this now as opposed to the end of the fiscal year?
In case we need to, we want, we want to monitor progress.
Okay.
So that we don't wait till the end of the year to look at something that.
And it's several month process, you know, each of us does a po- a part of it, um, so present. Meeting, so.
And in the past, right, where we had it presented at different meetings, it almost, it took close to a fiscal year just to get through all the individual reports. And that would be a question for this time, do we want to take that approach or do we want to kind of bunch them together? And get through multiple goals to make it a meeting.
Well, let's see, but once, I think, once we have it in front of us, I right now.
Yes, we don't have.
Um, so.
Be a first for me.
I mean, we should do a little prep work, exactly, what I'm saying, to take a look at the plan between now and the next meeting and think about the questions that we're raising and how. You know?
And I can, and I, I know I've been saying this for a while, I'm sorry I haven't gotten the document yet, but I can dummy something up that we can react to.
Okay.
And not as, not even a starting point, but something to react to and say, okay, here's something that might work from that. Go from there. Thank you, Jay keeps his record now. Any other trustee comments?
When is our next meeting?
I heard, I heard this, but it's the twelve, right?
Twelve, yes.
And is that an issue with the, no?
No, the select board counter ended up getting changed for December, so I don't have a.
Okay, so we'll be back to our second Tuesday for December, okay?
And how about January?
Uh, I'll look at.
So I have a feeling you'll be around.
Great, all right, well, in that case, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On it. All right, hi. I stay here.